To going to our public hearing for the Advilorian Tax Rate 2023. Citizens comments pertaining to the tax rate. I just want to remind every, all the councilmen, make sure you use your mics when you talk tonight. Turn them on. Are there any citizens comments? Are there any council comments?
Mr. Farnham, I think it's great that our taxes are not going to go up compared to this package, if I read that right.
Great.
So, you know, inflation being what it is, this is something good for the city and the citizens.
I agree.
I agree.
And I think this is the third year in a row with this tax rate.
Great. Yep.
Any other comments from the council?
Mr. Farnham, we need to pass the policy down, citizen public.
Um, citizens comments for the, it's the open hearing for the, uh, tax rate. Citizens comments was, okay, yeah, we're getting to that other part. Any, uh, anyone else? No? Alright, so we'll go ahead and close this, uh, public meeting. And we will move on to the proposed ordinance HB 2024 dash 24. The Advilorian Tax Rate of 2024. She went to the back to grab something.
Okay.
So I'll entertain a motion for proposed ordinance, uh, well, first reading.
First reading, an ordinance fixing the Advilorum property tax rates for the city of Waynesville for the year 2024 on all taxable property within said city. Second reading, an ordinance fixing the Advilorum property tax rates for the city of Waynesville for the year 2024 on all taxable property within said city.
Motion.
Howie.
Motion by Mr. Farnham.
I second.
Seconded by Mr. Farnham, I mean, Mr. Redd. Uh, discussion? Matt Clark, call the role.
Councilwoman Corin.
Yes.
Councilman Bland.
Yes.
Councilman Hayden.
Yes.
Councilman Rice.
Yes.
Councilman Hyatt.
Yes.
Councilwoman Dills.
Yes.
Councilman Farnham.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll move on to citizens comments.
Um, let me close again, sir.
I hear you.
Did he?
Yeah, he did. Right before you opened the door.
Of course.
How y'all doing?
Good.
Good.
Good, how are you?
Before we get started, do you want me to remind you of something?
You know how to control myself?
Yeah.
Uh, it's just like, uh, you didn't think, I didn't think over here. One of the things I've been having joy since I've been here since nineteen eighty-one is to see a beautiful Wayneville, Missouri. I know y'all were saying, I know, I already know his house, but I really think if if we need to raise the taxes, oh, me raise mine first. Car, car, nothing else. I would just love to see Wayneville grass cut. I know y'all, y'all already know.
Talking about long roadways. Yeah.
Because the way I live, sure, it's the, the, the state, that's the state highway. But then again, it goes through Wayneville. Pretty soon people will talk about, I'm going to just turn, they will talk about my seat. I live here. And my people, my people come from Illinois and yes, first thing my daughter did was she said, you have no right to have a traffic circle in Wayneville, they dig enough. But from what I'm gonna expect here, you dig enough to have a traffic circle, but y'all should dig enough to cut power grid, people don't expect they're supposed to do it. I'm gonna dig that along until they start to crack. But I want to make sure I'm clear on one thing. Wayneville is putting lights up on the streets and stuff and making the city look good at night, making the city safe at night. Greedwood Terrace don't have lights. I want to know, can I legally go across the street and talk to the Cleveland's that guy? But do the ward that does it, that Eric Toker? What can I do legally? Cause I don't want to go there out of control or go there without authorization to do so.
We're working on that, getting lights up in your neighborhood in a collaboration with Lakeland Electric.
That was outside, wanted to hear. Please, thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Williams, I know, I know we know who you are, but I need you to, for the record, your name and address.
Oh. My name is Bradley Williams, senior. I live at two one seven one five Grant Road. And I'm pretty proud, I've lived there for forty-two years. And I'd be glad if y'all raised somebody taxes to, I'll be the first ones that raise my taxes first, cut grass.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any other citizens comments? We'll go on, we also have this evening appointment, uh, for our park board seat, uh, my, one of our previous members, and I can, I can share this information, he, uh, is battling cancer. So he had to step down, um, he's very disappointed about that, uh, but we understand that life happens and, uh, we want to keep him in in prayers, him and his family as they go through this period, um, but we also have an appointment, uh, for that seat is Tracy Cefalas. Did I say that right? Man, I want it to be perfect. Cefalas. Cefalas, alright, so Tracy Cefalas, uh, to appoint to the Wayneville Park Board, I'll entertain a motion.
She'll make a motion.
Motion by? Ms. Corin.
I used my mic properly.
I'll second.
Second, second by Don Hayden, uh, Mr. Hayden, and, uh,
Councilman Farnham.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Dills.
Yes.
Councilman Hyatt.
Yes.
Councilman Rice.
Yes.
Councilman Hayden.
Yes.
Councilman Bland.
Yes.
Councilwoman Corin.
Yes.
Thank you.
I want to take it, I want to go ahead and present her with her certificate, she's here, and, um, I'm going to definitely give her an opportunity to say something today if she wants. It's like, what's in your plan? Speak! We're going to take a photo.
Part of the she, the person. Do you know that?
I don't know which one was. She'll just take over. What? That guy?
That's grass. He's one second.
Yeah. Yeah. Actually, I was asking if I could take this person's name.
Well, thank you for suggesting it. My husband, uh, lived here, I met with Bill Sargent, um, two thousand nine to twenty thirteen. So when he retired, he was back here. And I always kind of wanted to get on it, but it's a little daunting finding gray cable and dresses to such a reference. Those, I finally got it filled up, thank you.
Glad to have you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I want to say she also came and participated in, uh, an event we had here at the city to learn about the city government, right? And had a good chance to get a tour when we did the, uh, we worked with AUSA. Um, and also from that, that point, she, you attended that class, that same classes, that orientation class for all board members. So her, her and her husband both put in applications to participate in our city, and I think that's commendable that they, they want to come out and, uh, give their time. So I wanted to make sure we shared that piece.
Absolutely.
Okay, we'll move on to our next item on the agenda is administrator's report.
Okay, kind of go through the, uh, August twenty twenty-four administrator's report. And to start with the park board, there was no meeting held in August, uh, next meeting scheduled for September twelfth. Utility Committee. Uh, there were department updates given by Water, Sewer, Electric and Natural Gas. Natural Gas, uh, gave a report about what we call a DEMP Plan, which is the Distribution Integrity Management Program Plan. Uh, this is a annual update that is required by our natural gas system, and we just received back that, uh, this inspection and review uh, passed for the city of Waynesville. Uh, our natural gas supervisor also gave an update on diamond maps and GIS mapping of the natural gas system for the city of Waynesville. We, uh, discussed an electric feeder tie, uh, and bids received for that feeder tie. Scobee Powerline Construction was, uh, recommended by that committee to, uh, forward to council, uh, bid amount of two hundred and twenty thousand, four hundred and eight dollars to give a idea of where this, uh, where this tie is. This is a tie going from roughly Dire Street to, um, Summit, which will then feed the Summit electric in two directions. So if we do have, uh, you know, a power outage on one side, hopefully it doesn't affect the other side, and we can feed that, uh, bi-directionally. Uh, next utility committee is scheduled for September ninth at three thirty. Vanny is still here, so I'm going to go back with a little bit of history, what Bill Farnham had said last, uh, man, probably February-ish? It's been a bit, uh, the utility committee did approve, uh, lighting Greedwood Terrace in two phases. We have started the first phase, we have met with Lakeland, we have identified poles for lights. We plan on doing half of that this year and half of it next year as supported by that committee. So we have put that in our budget, and like I said, we have already identified poles with Lakeland, you know, working collaboratively with them to complete that project. Economic Development Committee met, uh, on eight-five. Business spotlight for this month was West Side Salon. Uh, we also discussed the opening of the Dollar Tree in Waynesville. We discussed the, uh, sale of real property on Patriot Landing, lots one and two. Next meeting scheduled for September ninth, uh, at five o'clock. Roads and Grounds Committee. Um, had a visitor at Roads and Grounds, Ms. Ruby Ward of Business Graphics came by to address the Roads and Grounds Committee uh, concerning parking, parking in front of her business, business specifically, which is located on the square. Um, after review of the, uh, of the, you know, what her ask was and what the situation was, that committee come forward with, uh, with an option to allow the area roughly where that area, uh, arrow is as a loading and unloading zone. Uh, they thought the benefit of that was, one, yes, it would benefit her concern, but two, it would also benefit the other businesses along the, the square to have an additional loading, unloading zone if they needed, uh, you know, to utilize that. We discussed utility cut repairs, I know there has been several utility cuts up and down throughout the city, and I've been asked a few times, you know, how, how do we repair those, what, why do we have so many of those? We actually collect those throughout the year, and as the asphalt company comes in to do one, we'd rather do fifteen. And so we only bring them in like maybe twice a year, and we have several of them that they can do because it's, uh, more affordable per utility repair or cut repair than just doing one at a time. And we discussed, uh, grass mowing, man, Vanny, he's, he's getting a lot of attention. We did discuss, uh, right-of-way mowing and grass mowing, um, and the intent of the city to go out and hit certain roads. Uh, I will tell you that we've struggled with, uh, just some tractors this year, and, uh, we've, we've had a tractor actually in the shop on two separate occasions this spring. Uh, as we went through the summer, the first day we got the tractor back, worked four hours and the doctor broke it, you know, sent it back. It is working, our approach was start at the schools. Give me GW Lane, give me H Highway, let's, you know, let's start going through the school areas and then expand from there. We have essentially made our first pass through the entire city, west to east. Next Roads and Grounds is September third at four o'clock. Emergency Service and Police Committee, uh, Police Department up, update. We had, uh, have discussed earlier the last couple, um, committee meetings and in camp, council. Uh, last council, we actually broke it, broke the news for the first time about the opioid K-nine grant that we received from the county. Uh, this is progressing to where we are starting to, you know, seek that K-nine. We, uh, we have settled in on, uh, Lee Geiger as the K-nine handler, so we are starting to make steps in that direction to uh, acquire the K-nine train and train the K-nine. I think the training was mentioned to go from roughly September to October twenty-fifth, uh, this fall. And then, uh, we also would like to kind of introduce the, uh, new reserve officer of Luke Carnahan, who's not with us, but I've had the pleasure to meet him, and he has signed on as a reserve officer. The next meeting is scheduled for September fifth at four o'clock. Finance and Human Resources. Uh, CID continues to track well. I think we're roughly at forty-four thousand currently through, uh, July. Advilorum, this was a neat one, good committee meeting, great information, uh, Amber provided this information to me. Uh, look at your tax rate, this is something that I was actually interested to see, in two thousand four it was point six six five eight, and two thousand twenty-four it's point six three oh six, that's a decrease in the tax rate of the city of Waynesville. Since two thousand nineteen, uh, we, we generally like to go back, uh, four or five years, because that typically gives you a snapshot of really where you're at, and you can see that overall it's been a decrease in nineteen, it was point six three four six, point six three six oh, point six two nine six, and then the last three consecutive years, point six three oh six, point six three oh six, point six two nine six. So we've been able to, as a city, maintain that, uh, tax rate, and I think that's key to, to, you know, mentioned to bring to the public's attention, but it's also a testament to, you know, what the city's drive is, and as you continue to build within the city, that also helps control the tax rate due to the Hancock Amendment. And, and that's something to keep in mind. All the efforts that we go forward with in trying to develop commercially, residentially, it, it actually helps to control that through the control, the increase through the Hancock Amendment. So that's another, that's another reason why, or let me give you kind of a legislative version, why you see the tax rate remains stagnant. And that's a good thing.
Yeah.
Uh, then the Advilorum again for twenty twenty-four, which we just went over. Next meeting scheduled for September fifth, five o'clock. Planning and zoning was held, uh, August thirteenth. It was my dad's birthday, by the way. Right before, I think he appreciated that on that. Anyway, we have rezoning requests from C-one to R-three. This property is located near the Roundabout, it's on the north side of Route sixty-six slash Highway seventeen. That request was, um, considered by the planning and zoning committee and approved by that committee.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Is that just the vacant land, I mean, does that house still stay there, it's on the knob?
No, their plans are both, both parcels, I don't know how well you can see that build, there's two parcels, there's a parcel that kind of joins sixty-six, and then there's a parcel directly north. It's roughly about a two-point-two acre, uh, parcel collectively, and they are, their plans right now, which we can't really dive into a whole lot because I think the sale of the property was contention upon the rezoning of the property, but the plans are to take that house out and replace. And that's really all I got, I don't really have a hard set of plans, if you will, to, to review right now. Any other questions? Uh, next, planning and zoning is currently scheduled for September tenth. Board of Adjustments. Board of Adjustments met on eight-seven. Uh, there was a variance request for eight oh one Washington Street, that variance was, uh, approved by the Board of Adjustments. Uh, did you give some idea what it was? It was a, um, how do you put that? It was a, I want to say a, uh, carport versus a garage. And I learn something every day, you know, the difference between a carport and a garage, because I apparently did not. Carport is open on one side, and the garage has a garage door, and that's basically the difference. So this, I, I learned something all the time, I thought carport, garage, it's all the same, it's not. So when you enclose a carport, it is considered a garage. And it actually falls under a different, uh, setback, it's falls under, it's a part of a house, it's, there's a lot of stuff to it. So we had to bring that forward for variance, had really good pictures, uh, the board got a really good look at, at, you know, what was going on there. That one was approved. We had a variance request for building fifty-nine, lot two of Pinnacle Place. Um, after much discussion, that variance was denied. And then the variance request for lot thirteen and fourteen were repealed by the person making the request prior to the opening of the public hearing. Next Board of Adjustments meeting right now is to be determined, as we don't have anything scheduled for next month yet. And we don't really have these on-set days like we do committee. We try to move these around in a month if we need to, uh, like, meet a notice or notification period, two weeks, you know, paper or something, so. But right now, nothing. Special events, Patriots Day, September seventh. Hogs and Frogs, September twentieth through twenty-second. And, um, I think we have a little bit of, uh, Hogs and Frogs announcement, I don't know if I can make sure or not, but people have got a message yesterday that, uh, we right now believe the Rainy Miss Missouri has currently agreed to be a judge at the Miss Croker contest, so competition is fierce.
That's it, John.
That's right.
Does anybody have any questions for, uh, John?
Oh, we do have a question.
Um, my, my question is, during Roads and Grounds, we talked about the Frog, and how the Frog needs some repairs, and you talked about needing a permit and all that, all that stuff. Would the same thing apply if we wanted to clean up sixty-six?
Clean up as mow grass?
Mow grass and, for lack of a better word, pull weeds, because when you go downtown, uh, the weeds in the, in the sidewalk and stuff, you know, I know that belongs to MoDOT, but what would the city have to do if we wanted to undertake that?
We would probably have to get a permit, but I really believe that would be a favorable permit to receive, that's very, I think, very simple to get that permit.
And the reason I bring that up is, is kind of the same way, are along the same lines as, as what Mr. Williams was saying. We're getting ready to have, you know, Hogs and Frogs is going to bring, you know, a hundred thousand people to town. I, I exaggerate, but only for effect. So, you know, I, I'd really like to make the downtown, I mean, I want all of it to look really good, but I really would like to see that downtown cleaned up as well. And ain't MoDots, there's no way they're coming in.
Not for that. And, and so I won't name the business owner downtown, but I have a business owner who likes to bring things to my attention in their own special way. And, you know, I've made, I'd made a mention of like, um, I think it was Cape State Cruisers at that time coming to town. And he said something, and he was right, he said, I want downtown looking good all the time. And, and so, you know, with that comment and with that and moving forward, there's, there's a lot of truth in that. And the only one that is going to basically make downtown look the way that we want it or expect it to be is us. MoDOT's going to come through twice a year, and, you know, that's, so, no, I, I hear that, and I, and I respect that, and I think that's something that, you know, given Roads and Grounds and given council, if that's the direction we want to move through our downtown area, or just through reaches of, of MoDOT right-of-way, absolutely, that's something that we could entertain.
Thank you. I want to add, add something to that. We had, we had that same concern about the, uh, right-of-way and keeping it clean. There are property owners that live there, no one's going to stop them from picking weeds in front of their business. Like, the taking care of this community is, is not solely on the city, it's on the citizens. Um, I've had organizations, I have organizations that have gotten with us, and if you haven't noticed, coming downtown into the city, do you see the weeds on the side of the road anymore? Those were removed by citizens and not the city, and they came here and they said, how can we help the city look good? And those are kind of citizens that we need, and that was, uh, that was a church. Banner Church came in here and said, we want to be a part of the city, we want to be a solution. And this is what they did, so we want to encourage our citizens to participate by, if everybody take care of the front of their property, we don't have to take man-hours away from our street department, I mean, it's a, it's a, how many people we have on street department? Three people. So to do, to do that, that, that much work, it takes more than just the city staff to, to do that, but I wanted to bring that up, but I would talk about them anyway. I told him I was going to use their name tonight, but I had talked about him previously, this has happened like, uh, probably about three, four weeks ago. Um, but he met with me, but there are several other organizations that's doing the same thing, and, and we're actually going to work on putting something together to make sure we can maintain it and assign it. Because MoDOT has, uh, since, uh, either changed or gotten rid of their, um, adopt a spot program. Yeah. So what we can do is we can create our own and, and just give sections to citizens that want to participate, and we establish, uh, cleanup days to make sure it's maintained. But those are some, some things that we can come together and kind of work on to make sure we address that issue, but I just want to continue to communicate that it's, it's the community, what makes the community great is the people. And if we all pitch in, it makes a light, light work for everyone. So I just want to kind of share that, I know that's always, uh, a topic of discussion with the streets and keep it clean, and, um, if we can go down the line of, some of our guys got to go cut grass because people are not cutting their yards, and that just takes away from everything, so it's every individual is important. I didn't just jump in there, I just, that's one of those things that, you know, we think about, and we need to make sure that everybody understands, we need their help. Uh, with that being said, we will move on to, are there any other comments for tonight? And I do apologize, because these are things that I'm, I'm sitting And I do apologize, because these are things that I'm sitting back working on during the day. And I haven't shared that stuff with you guys. But I'm trying to put a lot of things out there. So we got, we're going in the right direction. And I'm very appreciative of this council, because we got a great group of talented people here tonight. I really appreciate that. With that being said, we got items for consideration tonight under item line number nine. We got several ordinances. We'll start first with the first reading of HB 2024-26.
First reading, an ordinance establishing loading and unloading zone for a portion of North Benton Street, Waynesville, Missouri, fixing and effective date. Second reading, an ordinance establishing loading and unloading zones for a portion of North Benton Street, Waynesville, Missouri, fixing and effective date.
All right, and tell you the motion? Motion by Mr. Farnum. Second by Mr. Rice.
I do have a question, Ms. Aaron. On our ordinance, we don't have states if there's a timeframe?
Oh, okay.
Shouldn't that be in the ordinance?
You guys did talk about that. We talked about basically 8 to 5 Monday through Friday. But if we want to make it 24 hours, I mean...
Well, I think she's meaning the loading zone timeframe, 15 minutes.
Oh, yeah.
Well, that, that is...
Because we had talked about both.
You know, Monday through Friday from 8 to 5:30, whatever that store hours are. Because if there's something else going on downtown after those hours, that'd be an apartment spot that'd be used.
Good point.
Yeah, because we had specifically talked about 8 to 5 Monday through Friday. So, can we amend?
We can make an amendment, too. We can approve this with an amendment of whatever line number we want to add that under.
Monday through Friday, 8 to 5?
Monday through Friday, 8 to 5. But it's also 15-minute loading.
Yes, and 15 minutes.
And 15 minutes.
Yeah. And just as an aside, I think we should consider doing this on all four sides of the square somewhere. I think we need to look at that moving forward. I just don't know where. But that has nothing to do with this.
Bear with the amendment, my motion still goes.
All right. Madam Clerk?
Councilwoman Farnum?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dills?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hyatt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rice?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hayden?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bland?
Yes.
Councilwoman Corrin?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to the proposed HB 2024-27. First read, please.
An ordinance approving a contract for the sale of Lot 2 of Patriots Landing, Phase 2, on GW Lane in the city of Waynesville, Missouri, to JPL St. Robert Mo, RE, LLC, fixing and effective date. Second reading, an ordinance approving a contract for the sale of Lot 2 of Patriots Landing, Phase 2, on GW Lane in the city of Waynesville, Missouri, to JPL St. Robert Mo, RE, LLC, fixing and effective date.
Motion? Yes.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Hayden, second by Mr. Hyatt. Discussion? Madam Clerk?
Councilwoman Corrin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bland?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hayden?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rice?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hyatt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dills?
Yes.
Councilwoman Farnum?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, proposed HB 2024-28. First read, please.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor and/or city administrator of the city of Waynesville to execute a contract between the city and SCOGI power line construction concerning the city's electric infrastructure, fixing and effective date. Second reading, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and/or city administrator of the city of Waynesville to execute a contract between the city and SCOGI power line construction concerning the city's electric infrastructure, fixing and effective date.
Motion? I make a motion. Motion by Mr. Hyatt, second by Mr. Rice. Discussion? Madam Clerk?
Councilwoman Corrin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bland?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hayden?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rice?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hyatt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dills?
Yes.
Councilwoman Farnum?
Yes.
Thank you.
Proposed HB 2024-29. First read, please.
An ordinance changing zoning classification for certain real estate from C2 commercial to R3 multifamily residential for property located at 1904 Historic Route 66 West in Waynesville, Missouri, fixing and effective date. Second reading, an ordinance changing zoning classification for certain real estate from C2 commercial to R3 multifamily residential for property located at 1904 Historic Route 66 West in Waynesville, Missouri, fixing and effective date.
Motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Farnum?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Hayden.
Who has a question?
Discussion?
Okay. John, John, I think that this is not the form for this question, but I'll ask it anyway. The rezoning doesn't have anything to do with egress, right? What I'm thinking about with that, when I looked at that map, I'd really like to see that property kick out onto, is that Summit? I think, the road right there? No, it's not Summit.
You're talking about the one that takes up into the neighborhood?
Yeah, the one that goes up into the neighborhood. Settlers Pass, yeah. Instead of on the 66. It feels like it would be a potential hazard for just yet another driveway coming out. Is that, that's outside the scope of the rezoning, right?
It is, but there is a time for that review as we go through plan review. If there is a, I will say, if there is a plan that proposes an entrance/exit on the Highway 17, it would have to be approved by both the city and MODOT. And so it would be reviewed twice. But absolutely, when we get those plans, start reviewing those plans, we bring those plans to roads and grounds for that ingress/egress of that development. And if, depending upon how the property is going to be developed, there could even be another planning and zoning for a plaque. We could put multiple buildings out there to which the developer may want to resell that has to be subdivided. And so, you know, there's several processes along the way that we have to basically check the box on prior to, you know, any kind of construction or building.
That's what I thought, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, good question, Don, thank you.
All right, any other questions? Madam Clerk?
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dills?
Yes.
Councilman Hyatt?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Hayden?
Yes.
Councilman Bland?
Yes.
Councilwoman Corrin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, proposed HB 2024-30. First read, please.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor and/or city administrator of the city of Waynesville to execute an agreement between the city and Aptigie Incorporated concerning the city's website, fixing and effective date. Second reading, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and/or city administrator of the city of Waynesville to execute an agreement between the city and Aptigie Incorporated concerning the city's website, fixing and effective date.
Motion? Motion by Mr. Farnum?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Madam. Discussion? Madam Clerk?
I just, is this going to be quick?
The timeline is like six, they do it in 60 days. They work on it behind the scenes. So we're looking at before the end of the year, yes? If that's what you're asking.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
Yes.
Pretty quick. I think there's a meeting tomorrow?
Supposedly, but maybe changed.
We have an implementation meeting. So I know that they did say 60 days. We will have more discussion. We said it beyond this, obviously, to get full approval from the council. But I know there is a meeting with Aptigie for that kickoff. And city staff will be attending that. Appropriate city staff, not myself.
I'm excited about it.
The current website designer will be very helpful in that transition.
All right, any other questions? Madam Clerk?
Councilwoman Corrin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bland?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hayden?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Hyatt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dills?
Yes.
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, so we don't have any resolutions this evening? Is there any other business that we need to discuss?
No, sir.
Let's go ahead and move on to council comments. We'll start with Mr. Farnum.
Well, first off, I'd like to thank our city employees. They do a lot of work behind the scenes that the citizens are not aware of. And they do their job very well. And it gets a little disheartening when you read stuff on the internet rashing one or two of the employees, and it's uncalled for. The second thing I want to bring up is, we have a scam artist working our area on the telephone. I had Tuesday a phone call, a woman wanting to know when was the last time I used a certain credit card? Because they had reports of mine being used in a state-owned e-crypt. And I really told the lady, I said, "I'm not going to tell you anything on the phone." And I got off, and I called that credit card company, and they said, "No, sir, that's a scam. You did the right thing. Be aware of people."
There's a lot of that going on. Okay, thank you, Mr. Farnum. Ms. Dills?
Yes, I just wanted to make sure that school starts Monday for most of the schools in the area. So please, watch out for the kids at the bus stop and loading and unloading in the school area, especially the middle school where it gets backed up into the street. I'm sure the police will be out there watching you. So just be careful and watch out for the kids.
Thank you. Mr. Hyatt?
Trudy stowed my line mine, but I would also like everybody to be cognizant of the school starting next week and be careful with all the little kids running around and obey the reduced speed limits. Thank you.
Mr. Hyatt? Mr. Rice?
Yes, I want to mention the Plasky County Daily News. Plasky County's best in-depth free news coverage, delivered seven days a week, 365 days a year. So if you're looking for breaking news in the county, city, or information on local committee meetings, council meetings, school board meetings, county commissioner meetings, then go to Plasky County Daily News. You can follow them on Facebook on Plasky County Daily News or on Twitter at Daryl Moreno. Thank you, Daryl.
Thank you. Mr. Hayden?
First of all, Tracy, welcome to Parkport. I think now I'll get my sign at the Summit Park so my residents will leave me alone.
We're discussing it.
Okay. With school starting, I'm going to re-energize my question about, did we ever hear anything from the school? On stops, on its business, school bus stops?
Yes and no. Is it complete? No. Have we got some mapped? Yes.
Okay. And then the last thing, maybe next year we should consider hiring some, I was just thinking about it, it just hit me a minute ago. We should hire seasonal employees.
We do.
We do.
Well, we only have three in streets. Maybe we should hire... It's just a thought. It doesn't matter. It's just a thought.
Our seasonal program's very successful, though, Don. Honestly, we utilize it through the parks in the summer. And we have found some incredible employees out there.
We've had one seasonal employee through the streets. But most of the time...
Schools coming back.
Okay. That was all, thank you.
Yeah, first I'd like to thank Benny for showing the pride that you have for our community of whichever everybody else could have the same pride that you do. I'd like to emphasize what Sean said. Make sure that you're headed in the right direction. And he's right about that. So let's review that with John and his team. The courage and the vision that you displayed with us tonight is outstanding. You guide us all in the right direction, and I think you deserve recognition for that. So I'm doing that, I'm doing my part, saying thank you for guiding us in the right direction. You're looking at community growth and all that. And it's everything we want. And in close, I hope to see everybody at Hogs and Frogs.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was going to bring up schools and thank the staff and...
People have short memories.
I always get the tail end of it. So ditto, 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 right? Thank you all. Thank you for everything that you do for us. Some of the best people in the world work for the city of Waynesville. And I love sharing this space up here with you all. I know we don't always see eye to eye, we don't agree on everything, but we have a good team. And I feel the city is moving in a good and positive direction. And lots of wonderful things are happening. And hopefully, the citizens can see that. So, thank you. And welcome to the Parkport.
John, you're going to talk about your standard voice, aren't you? Yes, I also have comments for this evening. There's a few things I want to talk about, so bear with me. I could get through this quick or take a long time. All right, so we had a SOP meeting yesterday, and we received our annual plaque for our support as Tier 1 sustaining members for SOP. So with SOP, the Sustainable Ozark Partnership, it's a great program for us to be a part of because we cannot do anything alone. This is just another picture of us collaborating, but from the other side of the work. I talked about how we got to work together as a community and keeping our community clean. But there's also a collaboration that we have to maintain that helps us connect to the proper resources outside of the community so that we can use those resources to continue to further and improve our quality of life. So we received this yesterday. I wanted to kind of make note of that. It was a great event. We got some updates on some things. And one of the good news measures I will share with you is a lot of people were worried about, you know, the downsides and things like that. Well, I will give you some positive feedback that there is supposed to be two basic training units that'll be stood up on the positive side. That means more trainees. They also noted that the possibility of another three after that. So that would make five, which is almost equivalent to a battalion, depending on how it's set up. But that is a positive note from the installation. We know that what happens on installation affects our community and our economy. Although that is important, it's also, it's equally important for us to know what our identity is. And as a community, that we continue to do the things that we've been doing with economic development. We have the program now. There are two $15,000 grants that are available to citizens that want to start a new business within the city. So you can get with Doug Potts at 774-6171. And you can ask for more information about that. I do want to bring that up because this is how we build our community. We are going to shape what our community looks like, and we can create our own sense of relevancy in this region. And that's what we need to, we're going to be focusing on even more so. I want to share this, constructive criticism and complaining to me are two different things. I think we get a lot of, we get a lot of both. But it's good when you can say thank you for the good things. So I want to share with you that the voice of one is not the voice of all. So, and I'm telling this to the staff. You're doing a good job. I know a lot of times we focus on the negative. We give more attention to the negative. I learned this a long time in the military. I had a leader that told me, sometimes the bad soldiers, they take your whole day away. And you forget the good ones. Because you spend all of your time working on the ones that are not productive in that sense. But when I switched it, you'd handle them after 5:00. I know it's the sacrifice, but you don't sacrifice the good soldier and the time and the mentorship to do the right thing. So I think as we look at it around our city, we do some great things. I see our guys out on the streets, from every department, out there working. They're moving. Of course, we're getting better over time. Of course, we're getting better over time, we got a turnaround. I mean, just looking at the numbers of our employees, we gotta take that in consideration of the amount that they're responsible for. And at the same time, we need to tell their story. This is who's out there, it's three people. But it doesn't take the city to pick up trash. It certainly doesn't take the city to, to, to cut a weed. You know, everybody can, can participate in that. And I'm not telling people to go out there and start picking up animals and stuff like that, I'm just saying that, work with me. Work with us because we're, we're a team. But, uh, don't get discouraged about the complaints. Now, also going back to school, I wanna say buckle up, phone down. I seen people today, um, going back to school, we talked about the kids walking around, but we're gonna have new drivers going to school too, cause I saw the car delay. And, um, we gonna have new drivers driving to school this year and, you know, go ahead and start planning now when you're gonna leave the house to go out because it's gonna be really, uh, really busy. Um, also, we have a city podcast. I have a podcast where I'm gonna be updating information. This is yet another way for us to get information to the citizens. So I'm asking everybody to share that information, uh, with your sphere of influence so we can continue to share this information with our citizens and continue to educate them on the, on the things that are being changed. Also, we've been invited to go up to, um, the Coyote, um, once a month to give updates. So we'll be taking those updates there, um, and sharing information yet in another venue. So we're trying to get that information out. Also, they have the Best of Plaski County vote going on right now. I'm gonna tell you, there's a lot of great organizations here in our city. Vote for them, support them. We want Waynesville to shine in this Best of Plaski because I truly believe we are the Best of Plaski. Well, I'm not gonna, you know, I'm not trying to break no relationships, but I'm just saying, there's a lot of great things happening in our city. And when we talk about true growth, we talking about people, we talking about homes, we talking about safety and taking care of people, this is what, this is what Waynesville is about. You know, what makes us special is our downtown area, our small businesses and how we take